We'll get ready to get started. Everybody, please rise. Mr. Moore for lead us in the prayer.
Let's pray. Gracious Lord, we thank you and give you glory and praise for this day. Lord, we thank you for this community gathered here today, Lord. We thank you for our audience. But we just pray that in our deliberations, our decisions, Lord, that your will would be done. We ask for your guidance and your direction, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And I will have pledged this line.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order for January 2016. We have no minutes because this is our second meeting of the line. I mean, approval of them is on our first meeting. Maybe you'll take a look at your agenda. There is a couple of additions. Under unannounced delegations, we have Lucas Jackson from Martin Stern and Associates. He is our auditor for Kane. And so we will be hearing from him. So that would be under unannounced delegations.
Lucius or Lucas?
Lucas. L-U-C-A-S. And I believe that is the only addition. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as correctly?
Some of them. Second.
Motion's been made and properly second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. First, we have unannounced delegations. And we have Tom Morgan from Gates County EMS. Do you want to hear it now or when we do about the EMS?
I think that was an understanding since we're all in agenda.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to the unannounced delegations. And Mr. Jackson, welcome to Gates County. We're looking forward to hearing your report.
Good evening. My name's Lucas Jackson. I'm an accountant for Mark Sars and Associates. And on behalf of Mark Sars, I want to thank you for allowing us to serve your auditors this year. This is my third year on this engagement. And I appreciate working with the staff here in Gates County. Looking forward to working with you in years to come. Like to say a special thanks to Sandy Murray and Natalie for their cooperation this year. It's a year long process. They have dealt with our needs quite frequently. This year, you had an unmodified opinion. Unmodified isn't bad. It actually is. And your report was recently approved by the Local Government Commission. Our admin staff should have your final comments to the leadership. Just going to go over some of the highlights of this year's 2015 audit. Your general fund activity was very comparable to prior year. Your revenues exceeded your expenditures a little over a million and a half. This is the Local Government Commission's classification of fund balance. Your file classification is non-spendable, do not cash for restricted external restrictions, committed internal constraints. This is, for example, be a project ordinance or something of that nature. Time is also internal constraints, but it's lower level. You're unassigned, we're taking no constraints at all. Okay. This is your general fund fund balance. As you can see from the line graph, your general fund fund balance is increased by approximately $423,000 from prior year. This is your calculation from the Local Government Commission of available fund balance. So they take out things they believe are non-spendable. And they have their classification of available fund balance. So this is used for comparative basis to other counties' year size. So you have an increase of available fund balance of $480,000, which is very positive, with available fund balance being $2.9 million. Your stabilization stays at you here. That is what they classify your account receivable. So available fund balance as a percent of your expenditures in your general fund is how the LGC classifies how long that you can necessarily float if revenues cease to come in. They recommend an eight percent. So you have 28 percent, which they would consider that maybe a little over three months, which is good. This is your top three revenue sources. As you can see, out of the warrant taxes, your local office sales tax, and your strictly intergovernmental revenues are your largest pieces, which make up 95 percent of your total revenue. Your other revenues are taxes, other taxes and license, and your unrestricted permits and fees, investment, that sort.
Lucas, what percentage are you showing on the add-on loan, right there?
That is showing 58 percent. So now we'll break that down and compare those top three of prior years. So your property tax, you can see pretty comparable prior year. You had a decrease of approximately $38,000, which is 1 percent. And that's your tax revenues, very comparable there. Restrictive intergovernmentals, it's your state and other brands, power bill, things of that sort. You know, like I said, here you have pretty comparable slight decreases, 2 percent, a little over, well, right at $50,000. Sales tax increase, right at $56,000 or 3 percent. See an increase in sales tax. Now we'll look at the expenditures. So your top three expenditures, General Government, Human Services, what looks like education, Human Services, and your other. And your other expenditures make up Public Safety, Economic and Physical Development, and your Culture and Recreation, and the debt service. So your education expenditures, very, very comparable, down $2,000 from prior year. Human Services, a decrease of 3 percent, around $66,000. And your General Government. General Government's administration, attorney, claimant, zoning, a lot of things fall into the General Government classification. You have an increase of 12 percent, or around about $204,000. For your water fund, you have a slight increase in cash. Debt service requirement is basically the same as last year. Looks like your charges for service went up along with your un-estricted net position. For your landfill, looks like cash is down from prior year. Charges for service is increased with a slight increase in your operating expenditure as well. Now that was pretty quick. Questions?
My question is, I know when you were talking about the 28 percent of available funds. In relation to county's size, I know the Local Government Commission has a, some brackets that we should follow in. What are those brackets?
I'm not sure exactly.
Can you find out?
Great question. Yes, I can find out for you. On the Local Government Commission's website, they have those comparisons. And I would be more than happy to get this.
I knew that last year we were, like, a little below that medium point. We were not on the top end, we were not on the low end. I'm just wondering.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if you get so low on that end, you'll get a nice letter.
We don't want that nice below. Okay. Additional questions?
You said we had an unqualified, we had an unmodified opinion. For some reason, I think that there is your term unqualified opinion.
Same thing. Exactly the same thing, just a change of language.
What are the other classifications?
Well, if you had a, you know, modified opinion, it would be negative that if you couldn't issue financial statements, or there was a serious problem with the audit, or anything of that nature.
Unmodified, modified.
Well, modified, could modified mean that you found something irregular with that? Put it in a modified place?
It'd have to be very irregular.
As in?
Major red flag.
The muscle. It would be modified status. It's a very good statement.
Yes. Anything else?
And we'll get the official report in a few.
Yes, you should have your own copies fairly soon.
And if you have any questions, we can send the sand to you or send you the reference.
You don't worry. We'll be here.
Well, thank you for coming.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time. Go have a good evening.
Thank you.
And I would like to note that our fund balance, a lot of that was from projects that continued over much of this year. So we have already appropriated some of that funding. And a good example is the Cameron Land Use Project that planning has been working on. Some of that money is listed as that $400,000 that went into fund balance. We've already appropriated that into this year's budget to cover the plan.
Okay. Well, thank you. I believe that completes the delegations. We have no administrative reports at this meeting or a public hearing. We do have some old business, election job descriptions. We'll turn to our county manager.
I believe that from November, we had discussed job descriptions for the elections, part-time positions. And I received this information on December the 31st. And this is a job description for the Elections Office Assistant. It is a part-time position and it's covered by two people. And this is what came directly from the Board of Elections.
That's what we have officially posted in the county's job descriptions.
Correct.
And this is, we haven't adjusted this document. This is the way we receive it.
This is the way we receive it, yes.
Did you see anything that you wanted to adjust?
I thought it more accurately described from my understanding what they do on a day-to-day basis than what personnel board had created.
Well, certainly they were more, have more knowledge of what they actually do. Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to accept this job description for the Elections Officer Assistant, part-time.
So who?
Second.
My motion's been made promptly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Chairman, are we waiting on anything else from Board of Elections? Is this only thing that we're waiting on?
We're still waiting on information regarding the MOP that was submitted to them several months ago.
Okay. The Board of Adjustments membership, I believe Ms. Baptiste is here.
This is a carryover from the meeting earlier this month regarding Reverend Perry's position as the Board of Adjustment. It was tabled at that meeting, and this is just a carryover from that table.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the problem was he was not attending meetings and not attended.
Yes.
Have you contacted him?
I had tried to contact him before the meeting. And it was tabled because Commissioner Jordan had requested to be able to contact him, so.
Mr. Jordan, were you able to contact him?
Yes, I did. I contacted Reverend Joe Perry and explained to me that the job he's working on now with the DMV and HOSK that the hours would not allow him to be here at will. And he appreciated the contact and he said that certainly he would concur with moving forward with, he moved in his name. He said, but conditions change certainly, which he would like to begin with serve in the future. If this is the position, permission.
So he understands that?
He understands and is beyond his control right now.
Okay. So we will need to advertise for that position from Ms. Baptiste? So the purpose would be to make sure we have a full board so that we can have a forum to do business?
Can you make a motion for that?
Yeah, I believe we do need a motion to concern Mr. Perry.
I'll make a motion that Mr. Joe Perry removed from the Board of Adjustment due to the schedule of time.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made, second, to relieve Mr. Perry from his duty because of job conflicts. This motion's been made promptly second. Any additional discussion? Certainly I'll implement changes from town to town. So I'll vote in favor, say aye. I'll oppose. Okay?
Yes, I have one other item up there, but I'll let Mr. Joe Green speak on it.
This is about Board of Adjustment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yesterday, I received a call from Larry Presnel asking to be removed from the Board of Adjustment. He asked to be, wants to resign. And with his resignation, we are going to be put on a very tight schedule because we've been working on the last six months with alternates. The alternate's been showing up, we don't have a meeting. So I would ask that you accept his resignation so we can move forward and put in an application for another full time.
Do you have anything in mind?
No. He asked that John Burke, I talked to her yesterday afternoon, send him an application, a form of resignation so he can submit to you. But the way we're operating right now, if one person doesn't show up, we can't have a meeting.
And how do you spell this last name?
P-R-E-S-S.
N-D-L-L.
N-D, yeah, N-D-L-L.
Prestonale. Sorry. I didn't catch the name. Ms. Baptiste, do you feel comfortable going ahead and for us to take action with our official piece of paper?
Yes, I do. Because as Mr. Green stated, with his resignation and Mr. Perry's position being vacated, we're back to the same situation of having two positions in which we're having to rely on the one new member that was moved up to permanent status and the alternate, and one alternate as well, so.
But you will send him a piece of paper?
Yes, I will. And it's already, it was placed in the mail today.
Okay.
And you spoke with him also?
I did not.
But Mr. Green, you spoke to him.
Mr. Green, that's why.
Yes, he called me at home.
Yeah, that's why I asked him to present it, because I was not the one to receive the information.
And you put a letter to him?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Why is the pleasure in the board?
I'm going to reset Mr. Prestonale's resignation and authorize Ms. Baptiste to advertise for two positions.
Motion's been made?
Second.
Motion's been made promptly second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, so we'll see two applications.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there area?
Yes, and I have to, I have to look it up, but I think Mr. Perry was.
Mr. Ford, please.
Mr. Ford.
Ford, South.
Yeah.
Okay. So does that vary court speed, area?
Yeah, and I think Mr. Presnel is in the same area.
I heard that.
Yes.
Well, check out and see what those.
Yeah. I'll let him, I'll make sure they edit for us.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. I believe that concludes our old business. We have new business. Mrs. Lane, I believe you have an issue about taxes. I'm favoring that.
Yes, ma'am. That's a good thing, and that's a good thing. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Here tonight on behalf of taxpayers, who, right before the Christmas holidays, presented those with the issue that we had some coding information, you may have that paperwork in front of you regarding a fire fee that was incorrectly charged for two parcels, one of which, well, both are raw land, and one of which is actually right away since the parcel's origination back in 2011. Of course, we know within the county, we don't allocate fire fees unless there's an actual building, a dwelling of some sort there. So that paperwork, just for reference, has been kind of worked up on what their refunds would be for both parcels. That's your question.
Okay. So for the taxpayer in question, we have a total refund of $200 on one parcel?
Yes.
And on these second parcels, $200 is waived?
That is correct, yes.
I'll publish it. Based on, it looks like three years where the $50 was charged, 2012, 2013, and 14. That was on picture, including 2015 as well?
Took 11.
11, 2011.
Okay.
I will say, before the 15s were. Again, just want to comment, before the 2015 bill was paid, there was a release, there was no need to charge fire fee incorrectly since it was a coding issue. So that was kind of absorbed, if you will. At that time, the taxpayer has resolved all taxes within the county areas of delinquents. So that's a good thing with that.
And the 2015 power was not.
That's right, yes, ma'am. It was kind of absorbed, if you will, like you said, with that problem.
Do I hear a motion to approve the refund to said taxpayer for $200 on one parcel, $200 on the next parcel? It was a coding, miscoded.
With that entry, sure, yes.
Chairman, I make a motion that we make both of these refunds that's been presented to us.
I have a motion to make to refund to the taxpayer $200 for each parcel.
I'll second that motion. Does that refer to 1131160?
It does, yes. With the refund line item, if you will, it does, yes, sir.
I don't see there's also discussion. Also, we said that we wanted to apply this to the outstanding taxes, but now we're.
Yes, that's right. At the time of the original conversation, on December 18th, the taxpayer had unpaid tax bills, if you will, and the discussion was brought up a refund. Well, typically, the county is not in the business at that time of doing a refund with their unpaid taxes. So, you know, having the taxes paid, as this issue was still pending, of course, you know, headed to the county commissioners. Of course, the taxpayer went ahead and took care of all the taxes, if you will, to avoid any further interest or penalty on that part. So typically, we would do a release if we caught it, you know, if there was such the opportunity. But in this case, we did on the 15s. The refund applies more appropriately to those prior years, 11, 12, 13, if you will, those all those cumulative years, so.
But he is currently, has all his taxes paid?
That is correct. That is correct, on all parcels of land, yes.
When it was first brought up, so I see we see.
That's right. That's why you had that email that was at that time on the 18th, and that was the approach of having all the taxes paid and which to avoid any interest or penalty, if you will. But, you know, he's the one who got approached to the county commissioner, so.
And it's fair to assume, looking at the documentation and the email that we got, that this was paid online?
In terms of.
When the payments were made?
Quite possibly, or in-person visit over the years. And that, you know, when the taxpayer actually had an in-person visit with us that day to better understand, because oftentimes, people see a bill, and truthfully, they may not know all the intricate going on, if you will, may not realize a fire fee, and that's exactly was the case. So when the taxpayer visited us that day, had a question, came in the office, we could break through and explain. And then discovering that, we realized that the coding issue existed. And what I really think transpired over time, those parcels were split parcels. That fire fee quite possibly could have retained on the parent pen, and then decoded within the database since 2011, got tagged, if you will, to two additional parcels that are descendant pens. Now, you know, that's, you know, not the case now, because we have a situation where we go in and we can code those specifically. So I really think that was the nature of events in this particular case, because they were descendant pens, if you will.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
So the fire assessment, the, it was implemented a number of years ago, but was it just by the minutes of commissioners, or is it written somewhere now?
That's an interesting point. In a year and four months there, I've kind of, you know, to dig in and see where that literature and that language is. We know that if it's zero to, or $50,000 and below value, we have $40 in place. If it's $50,000 and above with a dwelling of value, if you will, there's a $50 assessment. That's an interesting question. I would like to know as well, where specifically is the fire fee? I did not see it reflected in the Schedule of Values that was, you know, done, and it may be in the '09 Schedule of Values, I'll break through to see where those fire fees were established from. So that would be, I agree, Mr. Green, and I'd like an option more than as well, because we do have an opportunity to address that, I mean, if that needs to be, because that has been a topic, but certainly for more clarity, to have a better standard of where those fees come from, so.
I would like to, we would see the tax office office kind of manage to put together the language on how we implement that, bring it to us, so that we can formally accomplish, so we have some guidelines.
Right.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. Let's get that one all the way up before we go to any further. Okay. Motion on the floor, and I'm calling for a vote, is to refund the taxpayer for two parcels of land for fire codes that were assessed and offered this year, $200 each parcel.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So that has been approved.
I hope not.
All those opposed? Okay, so that has been approved. Name is Jordan.
Yes, I, I think we do need something, uh, formal, because if we're going to use the criteria that, uh, we have to have a building on each parcel. I think there's some other things, uh, that we, we need to consider as well. You know, uh, people that have adjoining parcels, but they have several homes. You know, there's a lot of things that are variables that could, could, uh, be looked at. Uh, but I would, uh, make a motion if necessary, or which would give directions to the tax, uh, director, the county manager, to, uh, develop a policy for, uh, implement, uh, fire crews. In conjunction with, uh, probably contacting the fire department, making sure that, uh, the budget with the labor, uh, fit what their needs, their needs are. I think they probably have some input in that as well. Probably give us some ideas, if you need.
Okay, yes, sir. Would you, um, are you going to make that in a form?
I'll, I'll make that motion that, uh, the tax director, the county manager, expect to develop a formal policy, uh, for adoption by the boards, uh, for implementing fire crews.
Could, uh, would you accept, uh, now much of that, that we first look to see if we have a, a, say, um, policy?
I'll, I'll modify that, uh, that first we'll check and see what, if there is a policy, um, set the work last.
Okay. Okay, motions before us that to, uh, investigate, uh, fire, uh, fees and see what we have on the books? And if there needs to be modifications or of, of more standard written parts. Okay, that's the motions. Any, is our second?
Second.
A motion's been made. Does that, any additional discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I'm chairman. I'd just like in addition, and maybe to answer a little bit of Jackson, I have read that, and I don't know if Mr. Lane can help me out with that or not. But as, as I recall, I don't know if it's a general statute or if it's in the Department of Insurance. Can you help me with that, sir? I can't remember what I read.
There was legislation passed when that, uh, fee was instituted. There was a cap put on that. There is language that, that spells that out, that dates back to, I'm thinking ninety-eight, ninety-nine, maybe. But we can, we can find that information and give it to the county manager.
Okay, a motion has been made and properly second. Any other discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Freeman, for that information. Okay, you hear none? All those opposed say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Mrs. Lane.
Thank you, folks.
No, thank you. You've worked me good.
Yes, thank you.
Keep the money, be polite.
All right, yes.
Okay, um, we have presentation of tax amendments from the planning board and board of adjustments, um, tax amendments.
This is just a presentation of the tax amendments for guys to review before we do the formal public hearing. Um, the tax amendments for the board of adjustment, we made a couple of changes to, um, the board of adjustment and the planning board. Um, for the board of adjustment, we just made and added some things that we are normally doing. Um, instead of it just being an oral tradition of how we conduct the board, we decided to formalize it in writing. But we also have some amendments that were made under general statute. And if you flip to about like the fourth page, I believe.
To what page?
Um, it's third, is the fourth page, is section thirteen, dash, zero, three, point, zero, four. That section was actually changed by general statute, um...
Just planning board.
Oh, board of adjustment.
She's doing second and first, I mean, it's in second and not first.
Okay, I didn't know that. Sorry, um...
Seventeen oh four, housing board.
Well, review of administrative decision is thirteen, dash, zero, one, point, four, zero, four. Administrative, uh, review of administrative decision. That section was changed by general statute, um, so this is just to reflect what was, what was done by general statute. Um, and it's GS one six zero eight, dash, three eight eight, section B one.
Section B one again, please.
Oh, it's section thirteen, dash, zero, one, point, zero, four, review of administrative decisions.
What is, what's the, what's the head?
Okay, section thirteen, zero, four, then it's numbered.
Number one is review of enforcement officers' decision. The other numbers that she counted was, was ranked within the general statute.
Okay, the ones, the twos, the threes.
No, that's, that's first. That must be the first one.
See, we got all that, because...
Right, yeah, I sent you that one. I sent you that one, so. It's the wrong page.
Okay, um, looking at the first part of it, um, Baptiste, the section thirteen, point, zero, one, ready, board of adjustments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had a couple of questions concerning that.
It's just the wrong information.
All this is the wrong...
Yeah, this one, this is what is, that's what's currently in the ordinance. Which all, having your packet now, that's what y'all currently have. This is the amended one that y'all hitting. Y'all ain't getting this.
Okay, so we need a table by and it's still next to me. Okay, little table, right?
If we want to go, if we want to go online and look at it, tell me what we're, what we should be looking for.
Well, this, um, the, the amended copy would not be available online because it hasn't been adopted.
I understand.
Yeah, um, but what you have now is what we have currently in the ordinance.
I mean, I said, that will be in our package for February.
Now, we're not re, we're not rewriting the ordinance ourselves, are we?
Um, we're rewriting certain sections of it because of general statute changes for board of adjustment. Um, right now, we don't have anything in the ordinance to say how the planning board carries it, carried out its business. So this would be, and the planning board section, which you have in the packet, is correct. This would be an addition to the ordinance, to, you know, to, um, just to put in writing what we are already doing.
Okay, so why don't we then focus on the planning board? And that is correct, just how to take it, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Article thirteen, dash, oh, two, planning board?
Yes.
Right.
And again, we currently, we don't have anything in the ordinance to say how the planning board makes a decision. Were they responsible, um, in terms of the cases that they fear, which they fear, map amendments, tax amendments? We have no regulation, so a lot, a lot of times, people ask how we make our decisions, and we have nothing to give them. We just, we're going by oral tradition. So this is mainly to put in writing or in order to see how we conduct the planning board, to probably make the decisions, the composition, and the fact that they, or have to send, make a recommendation to send to the board of, the board of county commissioners for final decision. And this is just for review today, um, just to introduce it to you guys, um, because we have to have it as a public hearing before it can be voted upon.
Before we start the discussion, I would have a recommendation. On this sequencing of implementing this change, we have article thirteen, article thirteen is the board of adjustment. And article thirteen, dash, oh, two, we have the planning board. It appear to me that if we're going to implement another subsection to that article, it would be the thirteen A, because you already have the thirteen oh two. I really struggled when I started looking at this because article thirteen, dash, oh, two, for planning board, you know, first numbering sequence is thirteen, dash, oh, two, four, one. And, uh, we've got a, a section, thirteen oh two, on your board of adjustment. In other words, the way the articles are set out, they're set up, article thirteen and fourteen. And what we're, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to put, uh, another article in between thirteen and fourteen.
Correct.
And if we give the article a number thirteen, dash, oh, two, it's, it's, it appears to be a bit of confusion. It should be something like thirteen A, and then your numbering system would follow, uh, in that order. It would be no confusion, uh, especially when you, the board of adjustments should have a thirteen oh two, and, uh, planning board have a thirteen oh two. But in this way, you could have a thirteen A, dash, oh, two. It would be clear reference where you are. You know, if I cited, if I cited a thirteen, dash, oh, two, that, uh, dash, oh, three, and didn't say planning board or board of adjustment, you know, then you're talking about the same.
Well, the board of adjustment, I had changed it to article thirteen, dash, zero, one, and planning board was thirteen, dash, zero, two. So there were, it wasn't a overlap.
See, we didn't get it right.
Also, we don't have, we don't, okay, so you didn't make, okay, all right, well.
See, it would be...
Okay, that would, that would...
Oh, two, the planning board?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So what we did, okay.
There were one we didn't get. Okay.
I read all this, well, all my goodness.
Uh, it was... Okay, um, as we kind of look at the articles of the planning board, um, I do have some concerns, and I think probably every, maybe as they read through those. Um, under thirteen, dash, oh, two, oh, two membership, um, the D part, the second paragraph, it states, absence from three consecutive regular scheduled meetings, or more than fifty percent or more meetings during any one. I think that's just, this, the wording there is a little confusing. I, more than fifty percent of the meetings, uh, during one calendar year. I don't think we need to call more twice. I know that's being, um, the semantics of it, but it, that's a little confusing.
So they have the second one?
Oh, still take you. I have some concern. Also, when you look at this, it says, when the planning board may be removed for cause by the board of commissioners upon written charges and after a public hearing. Why would we hear from them? But let me, let me, we should also note in there that they move, be removed by the board of commissioners, uh, upon written charges, uh, or written charges as, as, as described in the, in other words. We upset criteria to go by. It's not just something that someone's, well, I don't want so-and-so on the board of, uh, on the board in the office. But we upset criteria, and that should be referenced in there as to what commissioners are to use to, uh, to remove someone from charge of what. I think that needs to be...
And I don't think, yeah, I agree that we don't need a public hearing, kind of thing.
Is that something legal? I, I, I didn't see what it was actually.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
One thing, I'd tell you, well, under legal residence, uh, what we have for the purpose of this ordinance, the legal residence defined is an individual whose primary residence is located in the, in unincorporated areas of Gates County, and who is a taxpaying citizen of Gates County. But I, I have a little concern with that, uh, because, you know, we have people in the county, uh, first of all, we want to make sure they're legal citizens, illegal U.S. citizen, uh, but they may be renting. They, they may not be paying any taxes. But, uh, when I say that, I mean, you know, you got personal property taxes, well, vehicle, whatever, uh, but there may be some who don't have vehicle, I mean, for whatever reason. Uh, but is it, do they have to be a taxpaying citizen to, uh, be on the planning board? Is that what we're saying? Because, you know, we've got people that, like I said, uh, qualify their legality, uh, that, that rent property, or if they own the property, paying taxes and they're paying the owner to them. But they are not, uh, on the roles as a taxpaying citizen. So I think first of all, they need to be legal, uh, U.S. citizen. They also, uh, I don't feel it should be tied to paying, being a taxpaying citizen, a taxpaying, uh, property owner, if you will.
Okay, and that in my notes also, it's probably not even legal to discriminate, like, against someone that's a tax...
Yeah.
But, and on that portion, I think it would be good to have a clause in there that it is a person that has been in the county from some length of time. At prior department, we require you to be a legal resident for six months before you can make applications, rather than somebody just passing through. And on the first part of that, there, whose primary residence is located in an unincorporated area of Gates County, that amendment makes anyone who lives in the town of Gates County serve.
Correct, because, um, for the, for this, since, since Gatesville is incorporated, um, it's an entity unto itself. Um, they don't have planning or zoning, um, and they, for what we do in the county, they're, they're technically citizens of the county. But when it comes to certain things in terms of like planning and zoning, since they don't have planning and zoning, um, we felt it was, you know, just to have it for the, for citizens of the unincorporated area.
And they don't have to follow the planning and zoning ordinances of the county?
Right.
I believe they do have some ordinances.
They were just did in family, they may have a phone like here, well.
Yeah, yeah, but, and I had that, I had that noted too, um... That, that area, that unincorporated, it just needs to say Gates County, because you, you can't restrict somebody who's a member of the county, lives in the county, resident of the county. It's because they live inside of the city limits of Gates.
On the next page, under E, on the meetings, we have, all the meetings will begin at three P.M. There's no locations without meeting. These meetings are supposed to be public knowledge, and the meeting get moved around every time and probably won't know where to go for the meeting. Uh, I think that should, the location should be lo, mentioned in there too. Meeting will begin at three o'clock on the third Tuesday of each month and located in the courthouse, and, and wherever it's located. But it's, uh, it should be a, a set place.
Well, that's kind of problematic at this time, and I agree, it would be nice to put it there, but, you know, because of space restrictions, the courtroom is not always available. We do know that we no longer have a commissioner's room in the courthouse. Um, so, you know, it could fluctuate from the courtroom to the extension apartment, auditorium, um...
Or maybe just mention a previously posted location, the inns.
But, I mean, because it is in the ordinance, it's kind of hard to change where things are. I agree, it would be nice if we had a designated place. I think it would be great, but because of space restrictions at this time. But I do think, um... But I do think, um, it needs to be posted well in advance. And I have a notation, uh, conduct none of the meeting. You know, you said it would be publicized. What notice, highest what they publicize?
It says on the notice of meeting, in that section, um, notices by mail, um... Well, by mail, um, on the website. And for the public hearing portion, we advertise it in the newspaper and on the website. And send out additional letters. We send out letters twice, one for the Planning Board meeting and one for the Board of Commissioners.
And that's addressed, if I remember correctly, elsewhere already in the...
Right, and, yeah, under Notice of Meeting, Section E.
Did you mention that on the local paper, but that's not written in here? I know it's our practice to put it in the local paper, but it's not actually in here. If you look on the, uh, Section E and number four, notice of public hearing shall be promptly posted on the site and so on, but it does have mentioned also in the paper.
That's right. I did not see where it said the local paper.
I know it says nitpicking, but before we get too far away from it, I have made a note two on D, thirteen oh two, oh two. D just Commissioners, removal members, that's second. First, those, yes, the Commissioners, I know it's just a typo, but still, uh, in front of Ron Mason, I'm not sure.
And this is a comment that's kind of constructed in it. On item E, that, uh, thirteen oh two, oh three, E, go down to, to item two, under E, Notice of Meeting. I thought it's a little bit of a conflict where it says, uh, under two notices shall be mailed to the head of our city's private planning board meeting at least ten days, but not more than twenty-five days prior to the day of the hearing. I would think that would be the day of the meeting. Your hearing, your public hearing is going to be in three. And so the last sentence under three would be, uh, the end prime date of the public hearing, not this hearing.
Well, actually, you were, you were correct in saying the meeting, um, yeah, okay, I got you. This is, uh, this is where, where it mentions the Board of Adjustments.
That would be public. While I'm, I'm, uh, this letter, thirteen oh two, thirty dash oh two, four oh four. Item three, it says, these items are to be submitted by noon on this middle deadline date established by the planning zoning department. Could we be specific on that with one week? Because it doesn't give you an idea. It says, "By noon on this middle deadline date established by the planning zoning department." So is that something that varies or is it...
It can vary, um, just be, just depending on the amount of time, um, in each month. Because we count so many days so that we can have it in the newspaper. And if it's a month that has thirty days, or twenty-nine days, or thirty-one days, it can, it can vary slightly when exactly that, that, um, deadline date is.
And sometimes we have found that typically they want items of the newspaper at twelve noon on Friday. But then they've also sent Melissa a message Wednesday morning and said, "We need, if you have anything in the paper for next Wednesday, we need it today by twelve."
Which is not, which is your regular.
Right, but it has happened. And just for, if I may, for, um, in the zoning ordinance itself, under notice requirements, it does talk about a published notice. And it does mention that it should be caused as an notice to be published in a newspaper having general circulation in Gates County. And then it talks about mail notices and television notices as well.
One last item, same ones, under consistency statement, thirteen dash oh two, four oh four. It says, "Consistency statement is required when the planning board makes a final decision." That's in accordance with our general statute.
Yes, sir.
Could you include that, general statute number, in NGS? Is it two forty, or something like that? But I know it's per that general statute.
Yes.
I think that should be added.
Um, I have had some concerns, um, let me get the numbers straight. Thirteen dash oh two, oh three, ignoring, I'll go right over to, um, the voting. The Board shall render a decision on any properly filed, and this is number two, the Board shall render a decision on any properly filed application within thirty days after this initial reading. They will transmit this to Commissioners, uh, they'll send a copy of the decision to the applicant and property owners. And the application may be continued until the next meeting if the Board finds that the additional information is needed in order to render a decision. Thirty days is somebody's short time to have to render a decision if something is introduced. And some months, the way the Planning Board meets, it would be over thirty days before you would meet again?
Well, that's, that comes also into why we never really state when the deadline date is, because we make, I mean, sure that it's within that thirty day period. Just so that they're not awaiting, like, if we get an application that's a little bit before or a little bit after the deadline date. If we can get it in or can present it to the Board, you know, we might be able to go ahead on and do it. Just so that the applicant isn't, you know, they can have an expectation of how soon they're going to, their case is going to be heard. You know, instead of saying, "It's just whenever we schedule the next meeting."
What Miss Hopple's talking about, though, you take a month like March, that's thirty-one days. If you have your meeting in, in March, it would be over thirty days before you'd have your next one in April.
But that's what I'm saying. I come back from the meeting date, which is, you know, how it's scheduled, back, and that's how I set my deadline dates.
But we're a very legalistic country now, and there will be somebody saying, "Well, you took thirty-one days, you rule on mine," so it's all a matter of truth, because you didn't rule for thirty days. And that, it's in there several times, that thirty days, and I know it came from that pre- previous plan. But I agree with Miss Hopple, I think that, that number is unrealistic.
But I think, you know, I've seen in the past where we've had applicants, uh, business issues where it would affect them if they didn't get a decision out at a certain time. And, um, you know, if, if we don't have, uh, a reasonable time where the Planning Board makes decisions, if it really affects on businesses, uh, even citizens, if, you know, we delay it sixty days or whatever, I'm not saying thirty days is the right, but, you know, sometimes you can't, uh, maybe it should be, you know, some caveat, they have thirty days or, uh, extended based on a fixed basis, necessary or something like that. We've had situations where it was kind of constrained. Someone would put in an application, perhaps something zone, or put it zone forever, and it drags on, it really affects them.
But also, sometimes you don't have information, and you need to have longer than thirty days. Let's, let's say she got the information in one week, and then Planning Board this next week, and when we're going through it, we find out that there's a lot of information missing that we need to know, you might not have it in thirty days.
But this is from...
This is by voting.
Yeah, this is from the initial reading when it's first presented to the Board. Just like, um, with one of our previous cases, um, for Gates House, where they tabled it one month, and then the next month they had to take action on it, or it would come to the county Commissioners without a recommendation. That's what, this is addressing this.
And, and the Commissioners are the ones that have the final decision. This is basically, that's the Planning Board know that they have a time limit, and then it comes to Commissioners. If, if we can't make a decision, then certainly we could send it back to them and request that, uh, they provide the official information so we can, uh, give a, a decision that's, that's correct and just valid.
And I believe that, that thirty days, um, thirty days is from the general statute, where they have, you hear it one month, and if they table it that month, then they have to make a decision the next one, or it comes before y'all without a recommendation. I believe that's somewhere in the general statute. I have to look it up.
Okay, please talk about that.
I have one other thing I'd like to, that's, on the file, uh, first, on the thirteen oh two oh four, map or member, we don't have a definition of what type of maps we're speaking of, whether it's a zoning map, or subdivision map, or what it is. I need to be clarified and diagonal to see, a sketch plan of a property. I think it would be very beneficial to the Planning Department if there was some definition of what was required in that sketch.
And, and I don't know if this is in there, more than once, that Commissioner Jordan, may comment on, putting the general statute in there, um, the actual number and everything. Anytime we reference something, we should, we should have that general statute in there. And, and I don't know if there's another scenario in there, but when you're looking at it again, if you see one, we should have the general statute in there for, for reference. In the, in the voting, what we were just talking about, first, first sentence says, uh, that the Board will render a decision. And then the next sentence, in that one sense, it, it causes a recommendation, and then it causes a decision in the same sentence. Might be something that we might want to look at, uh, Ms. Battey. The Board shall transmit its recommendation to the county Commissioners and send a copy of the decision to the advocate. And I think that, I mean, that may not be an issue that's to point out, to just, to just look at and consider that, and see if it's, uh, could be worded differently because of the first sentence. May not be. Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This was presented to us for review and not, not to take action on. Do we need to develop a timeframe, next meeting or whatever?
I would think that you would have a clean copy of our recommendations or our thought process to send to us by the next meeting. Is that possible? I would be jacked, that word.
Not for, not for only.
Just for, for...
For additional, uh... Because I was going to say, um, I'm still, I'm still, um, I know a couple, well, a couple of different things would say that in terms of legal residence. Let me read this back to you, see if this is what you want me. Um, for, for purposes of this, purpose of this ordinance, a legal residence, resident is determined as an individual, their primary residence is located in Gates County. A legal resident, a legal U.S. resident, a, a legal U.S. citizen, resident for six months, and then take off taxpaying citizen.
And, and I think you could word that a little bit better.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but I'm just, that's the...
That wanted to make sure that a legal U.S. resident, a citizen of Gates County for at least six months.
With no, with no hard tax links, etc. in there.
Okay.
With no taxes.
But just take out, who is a taxpaying, well, okay, I...
Jennifer, I know, I know the lady lives in Gates County. She, um, lives in a home that trusts homes. She pays no taxes. She's lived there for twenty years, and she served on the Board for the county. So that, that's an example of one.
Well, this is a definition that was actually put in by the Planning Board, so I have no problem with it.
I just want you to know that that's, that's one that I'm aware of.
Of course, the trust is paying taxes.
Yeah.
She's home.
She's just a beneficiary.
Okay, well, thank you for the work you've done, the planning board, for the work they have done, and we look forward to seeing a revised edition.
And I'll email, um, I'll check on Melissa, and if she didn't send her a guess, I'll go ahead on and send a message to her, she can send it to y'all and email prior to the next, the next meeting.
Just, just before you leave, online, you also sent us section nine oh two that was deleted entirely.
Well, that was just, that was really just in my notes. That section was moved to under the revised section, um, for the Board, for the Board of Adjustments. Everything that the Board of Adjustment hears, which is under section nine, was just moved to their section, their revised section. In terms of variance, um, special use permits, and the reviews.
So all of section nine oh two is going to be deleted?
Yes, just going to be moved to section, it was being moved to section thirteen.
So the public boards will be using section thirteen.
Section nine oh three probably wouldn't come nine oh two. Because nine oh three talks a little bit about Board of Adjustments. But they want to just pick a look at all of that. I mean, a lot was thrown at us, uh, but still, it, it all forms together. And anytime we delete a section like that, also, we've got to make sure that it's not referenced anywhere else can be in the ordinance.
And I did check that.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, next item is the emergency management proposal and discussion. Sue, Ms. Morgan?
I was going to read the, the report that you have there. If, uh, I think all of you have time to look at it, but I was going to read it again. This presentation is a Gates County Rescue and EMS Board Director's Initial Report on the Services and Financial Status of the Gates County Rescue Squad Incorporated. We are currently staffing one paramedic level ambulance at all towns for emergency services in East and Cross Road. A second ambulance is staffed eight hours a day, six days a week at your fire station. This unit's primary responsibility is non-emergency transports, but is available for emergencies much of the time. A third ambulance is staffed by managers as needed during the eight to five workdays. Non-emergency transports, such as scheduled trips for dialysis, have generated revenue that has been used to subsidize the emergency service and to delay the redup, and reduce requests to Gates County for additional funds. A great deal of training and work has been done to achieve a paramedic level of service provided in Gates County. The ability to respond at paramedic level saves lives, allows early treatment... allows early treatment, that improves health of patients. Volunteers of Gates County Rescue and EMS provide a great service and save the residents of Gates County a great deal of tax dollars each year. Volunteers currently staff the second duty emergency ambulance at night. Volunteers also provide backup so that multiple ambulances and rescue services are available when needed. Now, the Gates County Rescue Squad has come to a point that additional funds are needed in order to maintain service at the current level. Our newest ambulance is a 2011 model that has over a hundred and sixty thousand miles. This truck is not paid for and has a balloon payment of approximately thirty-six thousand dollars due in early 2017. Funds available for payment of additional loans or to buy equipment have averaged about twenty thousand dollars per year for the last two years. We've been able to pay operating expenses but cannot replace the aging fleet of ambulances with our additional revenue. The ambulance fleet is old, high mileage, expensive to maintain. One of our ambulances required so much work that the board has authorized for mounting it on a new chassis for eighty-one thousand dollars. This refitted ambulance will be delivered in February of sixteen and is being financed by borrowing against a HOPR trust fund. A similar new ambulance costs in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars. The fleet of ambulances is logging about a hundred and sixty thousand miles per year. To keep the replacement mileage staying to two hundred and fifty thousand miles, we need to replace point six four trucks per year. Cardiac monitors on the ambulance are old technology and need to be upgraded to provide the best information to patient treatment, but also need to increase pay and benefits to remain competitive and retain good employees. At the present time, we are training rank for new employees who leave for better pay and benefits in neighboring counties. We greatly appreciate your support in helping obtain additional Medicaid funds. The first payment from this source will likely be in July of seventeen or six months of 2016. We also appreciate the twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation you have made for years to Gates County Rescue and EMS Incorporated. I wanted to give you some background information from the daily advance on the cost of EMS services. EMS services rarely pay for themselves. Shortfalls between what an ambulance service makes and spends are common and expected with EMS systems nationwide. EMS revenue accounts for the following percentage of each county's budgets. In current county, only twenty-seven percent of the budget is from revenues from patient transports or patient health. In Brooklyn County, it's fifty-five, Chonan seventy-six, Paspa Town sixty-nine, Gates, we're doing ninety-three percent at current time. If you decide to fund at the level that we're requesting, it will be at seventy percent funded by revenues we generate. And as another comparison, Burtie County has opened, has their own service and they're funding about forty percent of their operation through revenue. Gates County Rescue and EMS would need to obtain almost two hundred thousand dollars from sources other than EMS billings match Chonan's percentage, which is the highest in the group. Match in Paspa Town, Camden would require two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Gates County Rescue and EMS currently budgets fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars from other sources than EMS revenue. Twenty-five thousand less from the county and twenty-six thousand is from other sources, including donations. Camden County requested a bid for ambulances in 2015. The result was a bid of a million four hundred thousand dollars for three ambulances staffed all the time. That's approximately four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for each ambulance. Burtie County runs its own EMS service and its cost per year is two and a half million dollars for four ambulances. And their amount, their funding that's not covered by EMS services is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per ambulance. Camden County is now paying a contract price from Camden County of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for one ambulance staffed all the time and sixty percent of the state, side mill station manned one half the time. This equates to three hundred and three thousand dollars per ambulance manned full time. Gates County has more than three times as many emergency calls as Camden County. And Gates County should consider a second full-time emergency ambulance for the current call volume. We have no more resources to tap and our equipment is so old and is prohibitive to maintain. To maintain service over the long run, we need to follow: An additional seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars per year to keep the ambulance fleet reliable. An additional thirty-three thousand nine hundred dollars per year for medical equipment on the ambulances. An additional seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars per year for finance charges on the equipment above. An additional two hundred thousand dollars per year for employee benefits and salary. This totals to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand one seventy-five plus current two hundred and twenty-five thousand or three hundred and fifty-three thousand one seventy-five per year. We realize this is a large increase and will be difficult in one year. However, we must move toward filling this need because if you were to board directors that without additional funds, Gates County Rescue and EMS may be unable to pay their obligations along beyond February of seventeen. It is a recommendation of the board of directors to contract for emergency medical services to Gates County for the coming year, July of sixteen through June seventeen, for three hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for the services not included. This amount will allow Gates County Rescue and EMS to make changes that will continue, allow continuation of the valid service. And I'd like to make a comment here that you're not getting one ambulance without a name. You're getting at least two ambulances in the daytime and you're getting one ambulance that's staffed twenty-four hours a day, which you're getting a backup crew to come in and staff staff the second, third, fourth, fifth ambulance if needed for the volunteers of Rescue Squad. This amount will allow the Gates County Rescue Squad to make changes that will allow continuation of the valid services. Thank you for the opportunity to present the status and needs of Gates County Rescue and EMS and thank you for your consideration of this request.
Okay, thank you. And we can tell you have done a great deal of work and research as we were reading through that. And I think that each of us appreciated the personal visit from members of the board of directors to sit down with us and talk to us about this because we could answer, I mean, ask questions one-on-one. I think we all appreciate the efforts that you have made along those lines. Okay, Ms. Morgan, you said that with this, with this funding, it was two ambulances daytime and how many at nighttime with volunteers?
There's one twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, one twenty-four hours.
Every day. And then the second ambulance is available during daytime hours. A second ambulance is always available during these times. And at night, the second ambulance requires people to be called and respond to the station so there's a delay there. It's not somebody sitting there waiting to go. What we think we need or will need very shortly is two ambulances staffed twenty-four hours a day to meet the call volume in Camden.
I just wanted to make that clear.
With those, both full-time?
Correct.
Not just ambulance, but the people on the ambulance?
Correct. We have five ambulances. Four of them have over two hundred and fifty thousand miles on them and one of them died and we're replacing it and refurbishing it. So we'll have two ambulances that have our low mileage and allow... We have three ambulances that have had to do something for a short.
So we have five ambulances. How many of those are dedicated to non-emergency transport such as dialysis and those types of responses? Out of the five, how many are allocated with that or what percentage of those ambulances handle non-emergency transport?
We don't dedicate any ambulances to that. They're scheduled as needed. And one half of our transport or one half of our runs are non-emergent.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent are non-emergent. I'm not, I'm not trying to get that down to the percent, but that's close.
In 2011, we were in a situation where paramedic transport was low on operational capacity. Medex from Husky in October 2011 submitted application for non-emergency transport. And in the midst of November twenty-first, 2011, our emergency director, Billy Mann, presented a request by the Gates County Medical Transportation Committee to deny the request by Medex Medical Transport Services Incorporated to operate in Gates County. And lower the whole, we was truly made the motion to approve that request. So it put us in the business as a county of transporting non-emergency requests. And it looks like now we know about fifty percent of our operations dedicated to that. My question would be, if we had gone through allowing Medex to come in, there would have been no substitutes. Is that correct, a correct statement?
If we, if you, if the county had chosen to allow someone else to come in and do transport, then the Gates County Rescue would probably not have done as many or any. And we would not have received the revenue from that, from that business. And because of receiving that revenue, we've been able to survive from 2011 to now. But we can't continue to survive because we're only being paid for sixty percent of the rescue calls. So forty percent of the rescue calls, we could absolutely nothing afford. We bill for them, but we don't, we're not even collecting.
Excuse me, Ms. Stewart. When you say you're billing, you're talking about billing insurance companies, individuals?
Correct. We have, they, I don't know the name of the company, but we have a company that does a billing for us. And I believe our collection rate on the aggregate is about seventy to seventy-five percent. But on the emergency calls, we get paid for half of it. On the transport calls, we get paid for eighty-nine percent of it, but we'll transport somebody unless they can pay us. And so that business, because we get paid for everybody we service, does have a profit. And that profit has been plowed back in and allows us to manage this long. But the event that's coming up that's going to push us over the edge is the balloon payment on that last ambulance and not being able to replace ambulances. We used our last resource, which was the HOPR trust fund, to back up a loan to replace this last ambulance in Camden. And so the next one goes down, we really don't have a source to pay for that because our income is not sufficient to pay for loans for any more equipment.
So to get back to Commissioner Jordan's comment about denying that other franchise, if we had allowed it, we'd been here two years ago.
I think we've been here a lot sooner than that. It's, it's a little difficult to say because exactly what it would have, what it would have. If you look at the cost of running this type of service for all of the surrounding counties, it's in the ballpark of three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars per ambulance in addition to what they can pay. And if the county sees fit to allow us to continue to do transport, then that money can help offset some of the cost of the losing operation, which is the emergency transport.
One thing we do like is when somebody comes to us with a need such as this, we like it when you make recommendations and solutions. And it was great that you did that. And I read Billy's emails and they all seemed, the emails seemed like it was doable, talking about the tax, the fee. There was one comment in there, I think one lady in local government said something about some type of complication and she didn't elaborate on it. And I was wondering if we knew anything about her. Any further?
How do you know? I might just be good, I don't recall.
If you'll come to the podium of everyone to you.
And we, and the email was in the package, Billy. You got it. You might need to remember that.
It was going to be here, it's my mom, please.
She didn't elaborate on it. I mean, it all sounded doable until I read that one, one of the line. I didn't know if we learned anything new on it.
I don't know if Mr. Gregory had anything, comments?
Get to the end there. What are you saying about? Yes, sir.
Okay, and the second email from Kara Malonzi. Third sentence, second sentence says that the county has existing chapter sixty-nine rural districts, which is a fire district, the fire service fees that we have. There may be complicated factors. Here's an article I wrote that details, that details the authority. What she's saying is the fire fees that are established in chapter sixty-nine would be separate. You can, what I was asking, I asked a very general question. For emergency services, can you use this, this general statute that I referenced in that previous email? And she advised we could unless we had chapter sixty-nine districts in place, which we do. But we're not asking for fire, we're not asking this for, to replace the fire district fees that we already have. This will be in addition to the general statute. A live score, I think it's fourteen different things. Trash pickup, sand replenishment, there's a lot of things. And it does allow for fire and EMS. Since I didn't elaborate on what my, the intent of my question was, that was the complicated factor she was speaking of.
Okay. So to summarize, it's doable?
It is absolutely doable. When I refer to legislation, that was the chapter sixty-nine required legislation at the state level and our Gates County was written into that and allowed that cap that we actually mentioned earlier in the tax segment. But this one is just on a county commissioner basis. It does not require state legislation.
That's all right. And as I, as I reviewed that too, I think maybe they were covering to make sure that you don't take some of that, that fire money and put in some, take it out of that if you were to add something else into the model.
That is restricted. If you, the receipt of what it is is restricted, isn't it?
Absolutely.
I agree with this. I did contact some people. Jeff Smith, who's the chair at Chonan, you know, they have done, I believe they assessed it in Chonan County. And they're working to bring theirs up to paramedic players, which we already have done. And of course, those of you who remember from Camden, they considered going to a private contractor, but then decided against it. And Mike Blain said, you know, they were wanting to pass the time with doing theirs. Burtie went with the private contractor. My understanding is that that one went bankrupt.
That is correct. About four months into the new contract.
In the contract. And now they are playing catcher.
That is correct. Mitch Cooper is the EMS director there, is similar to my job. And I spoke with him and they've got a two and a half million dollar budget coming up for the next fiscal year.
Because they did not have anything.
That's right. That's right. It started from scratch.
And we do ask. I mean, it's kind of similar to us in size and it's always nice to hear what they were doing. Okay, any other comments?
How many other counties or operators we can stick it on own EMS without allowing private suppliers to come in?
I can't speak directly to that. Stormy, do you have a number?
How many counties, of course, surrounding counties, I said Hurford, Hurty. I know Hurford County's got private, private EMS operating emergency service. But the Guardians, Pasquettane, Quimmins, Bertie, Chauan, do they have private EMS services that are operating within the county?
For nine-one-one response, they do not.
They do not have nine-one-one.
Transports.
What transport, how do I know?
For medical transports, they, they do allow, some of them do allow other entities to come in. I don't want to misunderstand what you're saying, but we're really talking about apples and oranges. The non-emergency transport helps fund the emergency side. If we weren't allowed to do the non-emergency, then we would actually be asking for more money.
The thing about it is if you do it fifty percent of the businesses, it is a non-emergency transport. So if I didn't have that, then you would scale back. In other words, instead of needing five vehicles, we only need two. Instead of needing ten personnel, we only need five. So, I mean, you know, it's an offset there if you had private individuals to come in.
If you scale, if you scale back your ambulances from five to two, probably twenty-four to forty percent of the time, you are going to receive complaints for why we're not answering a third or fourth duty group.
The ambulances that we have on, we did not put any new ambulances in circulation to do non-emergencies. The ambulances that we have have been emergency ambulances throughout the history of the rescue squad. As a need would approach, a new ambulance would be purchased over time. When the rescue squad was originally formed in nineteen sixty-four, there was one. There was need, there were more than one call at the time, so another one was, was put on. So there has been a progression. There has been a choice made not to get rid of one because of the non-emergency transports, but it was not a cost incurred to buy them.
Is it possible that we could see if, perhaps making of all your revenues and expenses?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
In the middle of the lineups?
Absolutely. Our budget, our books are open and free to be by anyone.
And it states that information that you don't have.
It doesn't give you a budget, but it does say.
But it does say that the past three years, all of its are available. And I have a question. I know in Bertie, private came in, they went bankrupt. But do you know if that's happened in others or if they've applied for new franchises, other private individual products for franchises, and then they didn't make a profit, and then it has resorted back to the local EMS? Isn't that also a possibility?
It is a possibility. However, statewide, contracted EMS is anomalous. Most of the EMS agencies are county agencies that are in the tax base and they are, they're run by county employees. However, the feeling of the board was that we counterproductive financially for Gates County. I think what was presented was what we felt was the best option.
First off, I'd like to just say thank you, Jerry. If you want to go, I happen to be in a position where I hear most of the calls. I happen to explore some of which I know what you go through. I'm very proud of the training y'all have done with paramedics now. I know we have a couple neighbors close to me that are very proud of what you have done. And being an in-county business, we talk about economic resellment in here. We're talking about an in-county business that does business for the county, with the county, and through the county. And by most of the county residents, you may have some that don't live in the county, but we are none of them. But most of you are in the county. And I think that is a very big plus. We, this is a service that, unlike one that we just funded for over four million dollars, two and a half million coming out of taxpayers' pockets, you're asking for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a service that has the potential to serve every resident of Gates County at some time or other. And it's not us directly within the province. Some of my family members has been, had, had a necessity to call you. And I thank you and I praise the work that you do.
Thanks, Mr. Stewart.
Certainly, you know, not only does she, she can, they'll work it here, they're very professional. And certainly, when you need them, you need them. You may have questions about that.
If I may say, it's not the intent to minimize the service or the importance or the frankness of what you all do because it's absolutely one of the best services that we have in the county.
In my.
But this is, this is a great opportunity. We have to try to do it in the best possible way. Sometimes it makes things that you're not doing exactly what someone wants to do. But whatever we do, we're trying to do it the best in the entire county and also to try to make that function as best as we can. I think as commissioners, we do need to be aware of how it's, how everything's operated. We're not making decisions on how the dollars are spent once they go to you. And I think as commissioners, we are obligated, as citizens of the county, to take a look at that and make the decisions to put this money, appropriate this money that we can stand behind you and say, yes, this was the best decision. I know how it's operated. I've looked at the books. I think what you're doing is probably unquestionable and there are probably no better alternative. I think we need to be able to do that. And if they would do that, I think we've got to look at all of the financial documents and see how things are being done. And like I said, I'm the one that made that motion. Said, okay, I'll go along with it. That's, that's, but I don't think you do it. And he, of course, on the board, because you now have seen it. But at the same time, now we're five years down the road, we said, okay, we've got it all, but now we need some subsidy. So we really need to take a look at that, the way I feel about it. Not minimize it, anything that you all enjoy, but hey, I'll tell you, no telling when, when we may need this service. But I think at this point, so that we can, as citizens of this county, and say, hey, this was a good decision based on the best, based on the bad.
I would like to say, Tom, it's a great presentation. And, and the way your ambassadors approached us was done very well. And that's what I'll call, call you big, because that's, that's the way I felt and did a good job.
I'd like to add that service and services are invaluable. And I too recognize all the professionalism by being on calls. But to bring to our attention here, and most recently, we were spoken with by someone that looked at our aging society, and all of us are going to age from day to day, me in particular. But I do see that if I remember right, I think our senior citizens were never over four thousand. Was the population in the back twelve, if I remember correctly.
I think it's like you mean even higher than that.
That's going to need transportation, it's going to need rapid response and professional people. And that's where you approach it, so we appreciate it.
I'd like to offer a bit of clarification on the non-emergency side, not to, not to rebut what you had to say. And Stormy can speak directly to numbers, but those non-emergency transports that are available, the available number of the non-emergency transports fluctuates highly. We had, at one point, I think there were six or seven people on dialysis. Well, by the nature of dialysis, the patients will either be fixed or they will pass away. Thereby, they're not clients anymore. So at this current time, you don't have a lot. Dialysis still does provide some transport, provides some business. Gates House provides a small amount of business for non-emergency transport. But it is not a constant number that you can really count.
We went from seven dialysis patients in December of 2015 to one most of January. We increased back to two this week, but we, we fell from seven to one again a week and a half.
Could I go and just ask a question? Now, in twenty seventeen, I mean, in July of twenty seventeen, you will be getting reimbursed from Medicaid because you are a nonprofit, you can file. And that two hundred thousand will help offset some of your current.
And at that particular time, we would be expecting to get a half year's. And we really don't know what the amount would be. Our estimate is about seventy-five thousand dollars. But that would be in the following years, but not this coming year.
I get, I understood that. And that would recluse some of, some money that you have not been able to recluse.
That's correct. Until you allowed us to make those changes to work with the county, we could not collect for any of the Medicaid. And so we were losing this pool of money that we are now going to be able to tap into. But it's going to take some time to start receiving.
On the non-emergency fees, is it a set amount that you can charge as export something? Do you all have any attitude, just, you know, when you transport someone to values to dialysis in overseas city area? Is that, that might be that you have no control over?
It's a, there's a set fee for the VLS transport and then we receive mileage, depending on how far we travel. So it is a, it's a fixed fee. However, in a non-emergency situation, before we ever set those appointments, we know that, that it's payable. So whenever Tom says that we're collecting sixty percent of our billing, that shortfall is, that's everything mixed together. And that shortfall comes from the nine-one-one. A nine-one-one person, I can't, I have no control over whether they'll ever pay me or if they have a means of paying, whereas a non-emergency, I know I'm going to collect that.
Right. And I, I'm trying to get to something here, that, that fee that's charged, do we realize that twenty percent, thirty percent profit, you know, as a business person, you have to have some idea of what our profit margin is when you're making those non-emergencies?
It's a fixed, it's a fixed billing rate by Department of Social Services for Medicare, at a Medicare rate. So is it, is it profitable? Absolutely, it's profitable, but. I, I, it's impossible for me to speak to it because of the way that collections run. I see, I see a total collection based on all calls, not on that one call, no, to be able to isolate that profit.
Stormy, would, if I may, would it be correct to say, if you just, you refuse to add the nine-one-one call, which I know legally you cannot, then you could see a profit?
Absolutely. If I was an only and non-emergency company like Medex, then I would be growing.
But the funds you receive are just put back into the business, so that's why you have no profit.
Our goal is to be zero at the end of every year.
Would anybody in the audience like to comment on the rescue squad? I'd love to hear that.
If you're going for the rescue squad, I would not be here tonight. They saved my life two years ago, this past January fifteenth. And if it were not for them, I'd be in the boneyard tonight.
My wife was talking to Bobby Yule today at, at the community center. And he mentioned a person in his room that if it weren't for them, he would be here either. And that had to do with the paramedic level service. I started in the seventies. There was one unit and one gentleman and myself sometimes making calls. These were generally untrained people who took people to the hospital at one unit. And of course, now, different ballgames, not even, not even close. A lot of things are expected of us and we have people now in place that if we don't pay them a little better to give them some benefits, and this all comes into that money, we may lose some of them. We lost our assistant chief, Currituck, for that very reason. Went to a place where there were less, less calls and I think he was paying more and he goes to it. So that's what I was told. So, you know, we've got trucks in place, they're aging. And in order to keep the service that we now have, which the paying service is what's going to support the other. If you ever, I listen to the radios constantly, just like some of you do. And sometimes there's three and four calls at the same time. And they may not get any money for any of them because they're not, they're, they're emergency, not non-emergency. So, you know, if, for a fee, and I'm talking about not much, two nights going out to eat with your wife together might be enough to support us for a long period of time based on, you know, even the trash fee or water fee, if you use that number. Kind of looked at that and gosh, it was very clear to those of us in the room that what a cheap way to keep a super service in place. That we're all going to need, either have needed or going to need. And I just, I can't imagine anybody in our county, it's a regressive tax, you know, don't get me wrong. You know, you're charging everybody kind of the same amount for that fee. But gosh, what the, just think about one, one ride on a helicopter, what'd that cost? Or one, one ride with an ambulance.
And of course, the state of North Carolina requires us to have emergency services. I mean, it's no if and or. And the non-emergency helps to pay for our emergencies.
If I may add a, a little bit of information that a lot of people don't know of. You guys probably do realize this, but you may not know that it affects us at EMS. I'm going to ask Stormy to speak to some specifics. But because of the 2014 census, or the correct census, it put Gates County into a metropolitan status. We're, we're metropolitan, right? But due to the way the census is collected, majority of our population goes to tidewater to work. Thereby, puts us into a category of a metropolitan area. By having that designation, not being rural, but being metropolitan, it cuts our collection rate that we're able to bill Medicare by.
Eight point five percent reduction because of the urban classification, which equates to about a hundred thousand dollars of Medicare collections.
Isn't that where we can appeal that?
I talked with the Department of Agriculture about how we get that changed and it doesn't happen. We've actually. We've actually worked with Congress with Tillis to introduce House Resolution eight seventeen, which is a gap, a stopgap to try to, to help us recoup that, that funding that we lost. But it's, it's a House resolution that's on the floor of Congress that may never, ever see. And it, and it helps two counties in Gates County or in North Carolina.
We're not the only county that's affected by this change, but we all want to.
Let me have a thought of this. It sounds like it's a bad circle, sort of sounds like.
Very much.
Wonder how far that gets, how far that reaches?
I met in Camden, he's known.
None of, none of the surrounding counties, all of our surrounding counties are, are considered rural counties. And I, I stumbled across this. I was applying for a grant. And it said, click here to see if you qualify. And I clicked on it and looked at our county and we were urban. And I went, oh, we're not an urban county. So I looked at Camden, I looked at Currituck, I looked at Pasquettane. I looked at all the counties and they were all rural. So I called the Department of Agriculture and it's like, all these counties around me are, are rural counties and I'm an urban county. It makes no sense. My population is less. And we chucked on and said, yeah, that's because the, the percentage of your people who travel to Hampton Roads to work fall into this new census classification and your county is now considered a metropolitan link or reclassified as an urban county.
So that, that automatically reduces the allowable. So, that, that automatically reduces the allowable...
Our Medicare collective.
Collection, I...
Since House Bill eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen is the House Resolution to, to put a stopgap in place for, I believe the wording is two, two years, to try to recoup some money to those counties that are affected by this. Because this happened all over the country. In North Carolina, it happened to two counties.
And you don't know which county it was all?
I do not know what the second county was. I could, I could ask Congress with Tillis's office.
I believe it was the lead that wants to speak.
I just wanted to comment that Commissioner Jordan, the motion that you made some time back to keep Medics or whatever company from coming in here was the right motion to make because it benefited, benefited Gates County EMS. So, I thank you for making that motion at that time.
And I agree, I felt it was at that time.
Stormy, did, did that census, is that the one that shows also the per capita income in Gates County, like forty-six thousand per household or per individual?
And I might make a little, one more thing. We're not, we did not want the county to have to be an employer, taking on business. The intent was to keep it like it is with financial support of a fee that would allow us to run as we're currently running. And that plays out of another point, I think.
Makes a nice partnership.
That's, yeah, that's right. And I do know that we are, have been one of the leaders, we have a lot of people in paramedics, where all counties are playing catch-up, as I have talked to, you know, Chawan and different ones. And I do seem to believe that they're losing people because they are grabbing our people. And so, we need to keep those.
They're trying to use us as stepping stones from time to time.
That, that probably, absolutely. And you all, how the current person of view in a critical situation?
I think I heard one person say that they came back to Gates County because they liked the way their organization was run. Took the pay cut, they came back, lost some benefits, but they liked the way this one was running better than where they were.
Always nice to hear.
That's why I came back.
Oh, good. I hope you'll stay.
I intend to.
And Madam Commissioner, that was my wife, she came back, she was working full-time in Chawan County. And she came back to Gates County, it was now her back here.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Pleasure, I think, yes. We need to take a look at some of the information that we requested. The county manager needs to look at what the process would be if we did decide to implement a EMS fee, a federal tax appropriations, to protect, to benefit from citizens. So, I, I think we need to get that kind of information for us, and then we can make a decision on what, what type of appropriations we could give.
How long do you think you need to get that information?
Depends on who's on, you know, office at school government. I might be able to have it by February eighth, but there's no guarantee.
Okay. How, we try to have it by February eighth? And if you could, I think, Mr. Jordan had a question, if we did look at your annual statements. And hopefully, maybe we could make a decision on February the eighth, if we get the necessary information.
Yeah, hopefully, that information would, would provide the expenses as far as salaries and so forth, and that sort of thing. All of the breakdown of what, where those ones are going, what ones are coming.
I have a copy of our proposed, I have last year's budget and a proposed budget for this year right here, if you want.
That would be quite helpful.
Well, that's, that's the budget. It doesn't have to sit in line items or breakdown.
It shows where the, where the money will be spent through the fee. The right-hand column is, is a proposed operational budget for two thousand and sixteen to include this fee, this three hundred and fifty-three thousand that's in the presentation tonight. So, it does show you line item, how the money would be spent. And then I, I, like the presentation says, I can make available tomorrow the, the nine-ninety, the independent audit that was performed by Johnson and McLean in Murphysboro for last year and past budgets, if that's what...
Does your budget year coincide with that?
It does not. Right now, we're running a calendar year, January.
The board of directors, Congress was pointing out this group, and we feel a fiduciary responsibility to the county. And we try to look at ways to do this and try to come up with ways that we would be as responsible as we could be for citizens. And our votes are open. We have two good years of accounting data. Before that, before, we, we really don't have good data. But since we, the last two years, we have very good accounting data, and we have, we had all done for one year, and this year's will be all to assume that it can be done.
And there was a letter submitted on December the sixteenth, and I believe everyone should have received a copy, but I will read it. Says this letter is to serve official notice that Gates County Rescue Squad Incorporated will terminate current contract with the Gate County of Gates to provide rescue and EMS services effective June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. This notification is intended to comply with the one hundred and eighty-eight termination clause of the current contract. Gates County Rescue Squad Incorporated is unable to provide these services for twenty-five thousand as stated in the current contract. Gates County Rescue Squad Incorporated will submit a new contract to provide these same services to the county of Gates for the budget year July first, two thousand and sixteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. We look forward to serving the citizens of Gates County Committee year from now, sincerely, Tom Morgan, Chairman and Board of Directors. And we will be asking for budget information and begin in February, I'll send Stormy and all the information.
And I, I, not to, to, to counter, I'm trying to, I think it's, it's backup, you do, how, how long would it take for us to get medics or someone comfortable to sign up a county who needs that?
We'd have to put out an RFP, first of all.
An RFP, so that would be like thirty days.
And then, we'd have to have bids open, and then by the time they've signed everything, it might be pushing it for June, I mean, for July.
Well, you know, I'm thinking out of the box, I mean, I'm not sure if, you know, if we need to have that in process while we're still working this event, or we have to, to, to select. Certainly, we want, don't want to have a position where we don't have service, you know, to serve our citizens. And currently under contract.
The, the reason we canceled the contract is that we were required to do that by law, by the contract, in order to change anything in the contract. And we were required to give one hundred and eighty-eight notes, which we did. And we're not in any way saying that we don't provide services. We are saying we need to change the reimbursement amount in the contract.
Which, if that letter's not up in the rest, that's just...
Yes, require, ask, require us.
So, let me, technical question, I understand why you filed the, the canceled contract you were required to, you don't ask now, this question. And this is to help our Gates County Rescue Squad. We have, do we have any legal issue when we go to enter into a contract or come in? Do we have to, do we have any type?
No, we didn't, this was not.
Okay. Just want to be sure so we don't, we get everything in order, so, okay.
It is essentially renewing the contract.
Right.
Because you're still working on it.
And there's still, and we still have to provide the nine-one-one services.
We require escort.
Right, yeah, yeah, perspective. I just want to make sure you have a little glitch in there.
I think it's a, I think it's a good, a good question, Commissioner O'Leary, because anytime you're contracted for a service, there are, there are general statutes requirements that says that it has to be competitive if it's over a certain amount. When you start with ninety thousand dollars a last, it's not a requirement, but if it's over one hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, county manager, I think you, if you look at that general statute, it says if you do a contract that's over a certain amount, then it has to be a competitive bid. And with that, I, I do think we need to take a look at that protection, make sure that we're not signing a contract that's illegal.
Well, we would double check with all of that, but last time we did not advertise it, our attorney said it was fine with the way we did it.
I'm aware of, you know, we lay up there, and I'm not saying that, you know, attorney was wrong, but I think it's something we need to take a look at because I know that general statute is out there.
But a, a minus one hundred was less than, like...
Very, very, exactly, very much that. We're talking now, we got a thousand dollars, I think we get over ninety thousand, I'm not sure what the number is, but it's, it's about a hundred, three hundred or whatever. You get that amount, it has to be competitively put out there by law.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, just a question, would that be only if the contract is terminated, contract terminated?
I like the word renewal, I think, I heard Billy say, if that puts them in a, in a, in a different ballgame, a better life, then I'm, I'm sitting here wondering if we, the document that you gave us, did we, that's a joint agreement, do we have the ability to, to waive the one hundred and eighty days?
That was in the contract, the way the contract was written this past year, so that could be changed.
I mean, we're a party of that contract.
The way the contract was written, either side had a hundred and eighty days obligation of...
I'm just wondering, we waived that part of the contract? Because we're both parties, and I'm, I'm just looking away from it a little.
What you're saying is if you waive that, then we can withdraw that termination. And now, you're looking at a renewal contract, not, not a new contract.
Again, I'd like to commend all of you for what you do, and look forward to working with you for many years to come.
Well, Madam Chairman, we, we're in possession, we know what day and what time we were in possession of that document, but we don't have to vote on the document, we just know that we, we received it tonight.
Have we received it? If the, the district, if they've requested, hopefully, that we can have that, February seventh, and we can move forward. We can. We are not going to have it on the first Wednesday of the month because there's some conflicts. We'll have it on February the seventh, which is the...
On Sunday.
I believe it's the eighth. I was going to double check, it's February the eighth.
Eighth, excuse me.
You want to come early, you can.
You can, you can be on the front row.
Just, just double check.
We have, we have February eighth.
Eight, yeah. Ten AM.
I've got one more point, if I can, if I may. When, you know, we had a communication system paired with hurt for counties, which we used for a period of time, and it was very effective. But when we got our own, within our own county, knew our own people, there's no, I listened to them all the time, there's no disparity between the service we get from our communications, nine-one-one system. Knowing the roads, knowing the people, when they say you're very familiar, they generally are, for one reason or another. And it, it, it provides such a personal service that I think that's, that's, you don't put a dollar value on that, but it's, it's a good thing.
Well, the response time, certainly, if someone is in Gates County, it's way to cut down on the response time.
Right.
Whether it's not emergency or non-emergency.
That's correct. And they talk about each other, so, so they help each other active, and if they need more help, they get local, in that, it works. I guarantee it works.
I agree. Any other comments? Thank you, it was a wonderful presentation, it's very thorough, and we look forward to working with you in February.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving along, we have a request for surplus of access, county manager.
This is the generator that's no longer being used by the county, it's purchased with nine-one-one grant funds, and the school system has expressed interest in it. They would use it at one of their sites.
Okay. Surplus, the generator that we have, and the school, public schools has requested it. Do I hear a motion? A motion has been made that we, do we give it to the school?
Yes.
Okay, that we give the generator that, from the nine-one-one, to the Gates County Public Schools. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Second, motion's been made, possible second, or in discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go.
Seems like I'm, I don't want to seem kind of productive here or challenge everything, but we have reference here that going to give it to Gates County Public Schools, per General Statute one sixty-eight, two seventy-four. Reason I'm familiar with it, because I've been through this before. Two seventy-four is for the sale, lease, exchange, joint use of governmental property. And this would not totally meet that category. Commissioners are limited in what they can do as far as surplus property. But General Statute one sixty-eight dash two eighty, the supplement, this is for donation of personal property to other governmental, regional units. And it says a city, and when it says a city, it clarifies down here that it's talking about it could be a governmental unit within county. So, the city may donate to another governmental unit within the United States, assist a city or nonprofit organization operating in the United States, the District of Columbia, or one of the United States, any personal property, including supplies, materials, equipment that the governing board needs to surplus obsolete or unused. So, I would, I would certainly...
We can change the general statute, but we can give property to the school, and it has been done in the past. And we have given a vehicle to the animal shelter, and we gave one in the past to the community center.
Well, and I agree with that, but we want to make sure we've got the right general statute that we're doing that under, so we'll change that.
The General Statute one sixty, N A Q A.
Yes.
Okay.
I would say that, you know, one sixty-eight dash two seventy-four and both of, at least we should list both of them.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we...
Oh, that was a motion made. What motion?
Would you?
A motion was made.
And it would make that condition frame, let's, let's connect with it.
So, we can amend that motion to that general statute.
Okay, to include the additional statute.
Make that motion, make that general statute as a one, county manager.
And the second, Mr. Commissioner Phil?
Okay. Motion is to give the generator to the school system, we'll add General Statute one sixty-eight dash two eighty to the one that's already listed. Any additional comments? Hearing none, all those that they would say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. So, we have approved that, and then give it over to the superintendent. Uh, next item is report to the Agraroral Regional, uh, I forget what P stands for. Planning Organization, we have to report a, a member to the Bicycle Committee, and County Manager has graciously agreed to do it. Uh, do I hear a motion to report her to the Bicycle Committee? Thank you for taking part with the team, uh, it made a motion.
All of us.
Melissa, you picked one, and who says the second?
Second.
Second, motion's been made, the second, in discussion? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we'll see you bicycling for it. Okay, resolution, next. Requesting the Agraroral Rural Planning Organization to delay consideration of total ferry routes, routes. We have seen to get this letter every month.
Well, this is the one that was tabled from last month, the commissioners had voted, uh, had asked Melissa to reformat this so that it was included Gates County instead of Carthage, since it didn't come from Carthage. So that is what is before you.
Okay, it's been reformatted to indicate Gates County. Do I have a motion?
So, uh, we accept this resolution.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, and the second, that we support this resolution, requesting the Agraroral Rural Planning Organization to delay consideration of total on the ferries. In discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
I'd like to take it to our RPO meeting at the end of the month, or next week.
What do you say?
Yes.
Where is that meeting?
It'll be in the Foreman Center at COA.
Uh, we all, we, in our pocket, the last thing that the new business, I believe, is a foreign, foreign trade zone letter of support. Uh, this comes from the Virginia Port Authority, uh, and they're asking us to send this letter, they even sent us a letter to, to send. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, it would say that to our citizens, oh yes, we have the letter read.
Okay, uh, Mr. Freeman, how about you read it, if you, if not, not...
Uh, I'll be happy to, Madam Chairman. Dear Mr. Reinhardt, the purpose of this letter is to document the support of Gates County for a conclusion with the service area of foreign trade zone, better known as FTZ, number twenty. We understand that this means that the grantee, the Virginia Port Authority, will be able to apply to the foreign trade zones Board for Authority to Service Cities located within Gates County based on businesses, trade-related needs. We also note that the zone will be made available on a uniform basis to companies within Gates County in a matter consistent with legal requirement that each FTZ be operated as a public utility. Thank you for your assistance with this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions or need any additional information. I can be reached by email at nreinhardt@gatescountync.gov, or by phone at two five two three five seven two four one one. Sincerely, Natalie M. Reinhardt, County Manager.
Okay, and for that letter, that was a letter that they would like for us to send, but they sent a memo, um, what the benefits of the, in the foreign, uh, trade zone would be.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment here before we make a motion, that County Manager sent us a project, Annie, proposed company, uh, foreign company, interested in doing business here in Gates County, uh, that's near the Port Authority, it's called Project Annie, and, uh, this project fits within what this letter is proposing to accomplish. Where it's, uh, the company coming to Gates County now, uh, would benefit from being an example for certain, certain uniform taxes, trade taxes and so forth, uh, because we're in this FTZ zone. So I think it's, uh, you know, in, in, in approving this letter, it also makes Gates County more attractive, uh, to companies who are doing foreign trade to come and locate here, and bring in jobs for businesses, uh, that's going to add tax revenue to, to the county. So, um, I'm highly in favor of approving this, and also, I'm highly in favor of, uh, moving forward with Project Annie, this company that's proposing to, uh, consider Gates County.
Will you read it, please?
And I, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, foreign trade zone request letter, um, to include Gates County in the, in the, uh, the area, uh, of the Port Authority.
Can I second that motion, Madam Chairman?
A motion that has been made, the second, in discussion. Okay, hearing none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, I believe that finishes the new business. Moving on, um, just says, comments? Are there any? If you did sign up, we'll still let you speak. Okay, um, Commissioners' comments? I can normally defer to others, but I think I'll start off tonight. I do want to thank each of you for coming, I do especially want to thank the, um, EMS and Rescue Squad, your presentation was very informative, uh, and we appreciate everything you do for the county, uh, and we look forward to working with you on a continual basis. Uh, a couple of just side notes, um, our next Commissioners' meeting is going to be on Monday, February eighth, um, twenty fifteen, at ten AM, because of the conflict with the first Monday in the month, first Wednesday in the month, excuse me. Also, um, some of you, this is a FYI, some of you know about Scott Howard, uh, he is an employee with, uh, the Water Department, he has been I for extensive time, and there is a benefit for him next Friday night, uh, four to seven PM, I believe it's at Your Baptist Church, uh, and, um, and the sausage and pancakes, um, to help raise funds for, um, Scott. So hopefully that we will be supportive of our employee. Commissioner Owens, we'll go down to paper.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for being here. Um, we have plenty of opportunities to, um, brag on our county, and certainly our Rescue Squad, they're about terrorism, and they've serviced our county, it's something that we can brag on and applaud, uh, just looking at the character of the ladies and gentlemen that are here today, uh, supporting them in this presentation, uh, something we'd be very proud of. We would be suffering without you, and, uh, the detail that goes into the presentation, and the things that you speak about when you come to that podium, uh, makes it very clear that you know what you're doing. Thank you everybody for being here.
All right, uh, two things, everyone for being here, especially, uh, EMS, I sort of appreciate the jobs you guys do, I... I know it seems sometimes nice to thank this job, but, you know, we all call to do certain things, and you guys answer my call, and I sort of appreciate, uh... We do want to try to do what is best for the county at all times, and in order to do that, sometimes the process is not as, as friendly as it should, but it's a process, and, and we have to go through it, uh, decisions that are made, uh, sometimes you just can't make them based on your emotions, because if you do, uh, you may get in trouble, and so it has to be done meticulously, and that's what we want to do, and obviously, when you look at all angles, the best thing is going to come out, and, um, uh, I ask everyone to be mindful of this cold weather, because, uh, you're not careful, you know, we don't have a lot of it, but, uh, you can be mindful of it and take care of yourself.
And I too like to thank everyone of you for being here tonight, and we had a lot of participation from the audience, and not almost everyone out here had, had comments to make, and that makes it a whole lot better for us sitting up here too. It's just good to hear the, the participation from the individual citizens. And I know most of you are here representing Rescue Squad, and, well, you, everyone of you know how I feel about the Rescue Squad. Everybody in the Rescue Squad is not volunteering anymore like they used to be, that's, everyone is a professional, whether you get a paycheck or whether you volunteer, everyone is a professional, and that professionalism is appreciated by everyone. If anybody that has ever watched y'all perform knows this, and anyone who has ever volunteered, I've spent a long time volunteering, anyone who's ever volunteered knows what you go through, and I really appreciate your service, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Felton, I, uh, first of all, I'd say God bless all of you, uh, Mr. York, Perry, York, very dear friend of mine, uh, glad to see you and have you with us, so, appreciate that. As you all know, uh, we kind of set direction through you as your commissioners, but the decisions we make, uh, sometimes are shared, and sometimes you see that, uh, we may not, but in the end, we all come together, and we do make that decision. So, uh, thank you for being here, thank you for supporting us, and, uh, we'll support you. Have a good evening.
And before we go, uh, as Commissioner Jordan mentioned, I, because of the weather, the conditions, and the cold, and I'll, please check on your neighbors. We have a lot of people who are elderly, uh, you know, electricity could go out, uh, the pipes could freeze, um, you know, let's be good neighbors and check on each other, to make sure we are everybody is, has something warm, they're warm, have, or water, and they're basically needing something in hand, and we, uh, pray that we don't have a lot of emergency calls when the weather stays out. Because, you know, we, y'all risk your lives too, when you go out in adverse conditions, so we, uh, hopefully, we can skate through this storm. Okay, um, before we go on to the next item of the Central Middle School discussion, I think we need to take a break, um, for a few minutes, and stretch, and, uh, and once again, thank you for coming, and you can stay and listen to the school discussion.
Okay, um, the next item of the business is the Central Middle School, um, concerning that, um, concerning the lateness of the island, would you entertain a motion that we set a date to just have a separate meeting on the middle school? Because I think that's going to be a sensitive conversation.
Yes, ma'am, I think that, uh, too, due to the fact of the weather situation, plus the lateness of the island. Yeah, it, it needs our best, it needs our best effort of discussion.
Because we have to come up with various scenarios of how to move forward.
Right.
I think, um, you know, there's a lot of different avenues that we can go down, and, uh, see, I do think that probably needs our best, yes.
Madam Chairman, um, I know we're going to be looking for a date, but I would like to make a motion now to table, um, to table the conversation for tonight. And make that form of a motion.
So, okay, a motion's been made, the second, to table the discussions on the middle school until a, a date that we can decide upon, uh, in a discussion? Hearing none, I would say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, now, to have a meeting to discuss, uh, we have to advertise that we have to meet, and what is the timeframe?
Newspaper has to have it by Friday, one of those special, that's what, it's a special, seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours, okay, we just have to put it up on the, on the, on the high score. Uh, everybody look at the calendars. Now, there was a potential that we would have a regional meeting on the twenty eighth, the twenty ninth, can you word it?
Yes, I reported you that message today, it is at twelve noon on the twenty eighth.
For the regional?
It's for the county managers and chairs of five of the northeastern counties, I think.
Okay, um, what is the pleasure of the group?
Considering a four o'clock meeting, anything like that, or nine?
Four o'clock, okay, I'm in a position right now where my wife, her back, and, um, she's been going third week, three times a week, from nine forty-five to about twelve, uh, when she's in person, five minutes. But at least for the next seven weeks, probably.
Okay.
And it's four, five, five, I guess, maybe.
And Tuesday, though, doesn't work for you, because you have a church, right?
That's right.
I'm not, if I may, I'm not sure how Sony worked to me, but, uh, the next Commissioners' meeting is February the eighth. On the February the fifteenth, there was a budget work session scheduled at five thirty, which is a Monday. I don't know if you want to meet at four o'clock on that day, but that, that fifteenth was just the day I wanted to meet with the commissioners to go ahead and talk about what are your expectations, what things you want me to look for in the budget.
Well, that certainly will give us time to get a notification, and also, we could tell if I did again on that Monday night at, uh, regular, I mean, Monday morning meeting. Why don't I, February fifteenth at four o'clock?
The other meeting was scheduled at?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
That'd be good.
For me. Okay, so we would do schools at four, okay, do I have a motion that we do it?
What date is that?
The fifteenth.
Monday.
Monday.
Do I hear a motion?
That's Monday the fifteenth.
At February, yes, sir.
That work for you, Commissioner?
Uh, I believe so, I mean, I think eighth, I'll probably have court two, but, uh, probably have to, maybe I can dash back before.
But this is the fifteenth?
Um, uh...
Oh, the, the eighth, and that eighth, where will we meet, meeting?
And the fifteenth is probably at court two.
The extension office should be available, uh, we will overcheck and confirm.
Okay.
Melissa's already reserved, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman, I move that we, um, take our meeting, uh, about Central Middle School to February fifteenth at four o'clock.
Okay, a motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, a seconded, all those in discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Uh, well, before we go any further, um, in case of weather conditions the next few days, um, my, we were talking about this earlier, my philosophy has always been the errand side caution, uh, by time, like, if, if you have to delay the opening of offices because of weather conditions, is that the billing of the, that we just judge it? It could be that by ten o'clock, the roads would be clear.
And you might even regret somebody being there.
Yeah, if somebody is, you know, if we say, oh no, you got to be here at eight o'clock, like, or eight thirty, like, the morning they happen to be, somebody had a horrible accident, that would be, I, you know, and our employees, I do believe, go the extra mile in a lot of cases, sometimes we don't realize, you know, that they're staying late, and then working through... and working through lunch or whatever. But, so, I mean, we don't know, we'll just have to call it as it comes up. But we do check with the highway and conditions, and that is, that's, that's what's my philosophy. I like to err on the side of caution, I just want to know if that goes beyond. So hopefully we won't need to delay or do anything.
Be so bad, we'll just say aye.
Okay, the, do I have a motion, we need to go in closed session? Yes.
My Chairman, I'll make a vote, if you go in closed session.
Pursue it to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, eleven A for legal economic development and personnel.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, do I, entertain a motion to come on closed session?
So move.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I believe we have three items coming on closed session.
My Chairman, I'd like to address the last one we discussed. I move that we have our County Manager cut check for the U R P grant application amount of fifty dollars to come from the area that was discussed in closed session, of course.
I'll second that motion, my Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made that we direct the County Manager to cut check for the-
U R P?
U R P application grant to come out of emergency funds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, number two. Direct the County Manager to send a letter of reply to the complaint, complainant concerning the matter discussed during closed session.
My Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made, a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The third is to direct County Manager to send a letter in response to identify properties?
Super sites.
Super sites. Okay, direct County Manager to write a letter in reply to companies seeking sites for business location. Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, thank you, we will pass the motion up to adjourn. Motion made, so move, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.